... McGrath received from the Valley Economic Development Center, or VEDC, a partner of the city of Los Angeles.
They provide it alone to do many of the tenant improvements and working capital. They're a great organization.
VEDC assists businesses with loans and helps walk them through the city's required paperwork.
We actually started working with David back in 2010. We helped finance the Onyx match, and we're very proud to be able to help finance this business here.
In return, new businesses like Aqua Lounge bring jobs, in this case, 15 new jobs. A give-and-take partnership between a city and its business owners. Now that's worth popping open the bubbly. The Aqua Lounge is located at 500 South Spring Street. It will serve approximately 15 champagnes and sparkling wines by the glass, specialty champagne cocktails, and over 150 champagnes by the bottle. Ever wonder how cities clean their water? Well, now you can find that out and a lot more thanks to a new environmental learning center from the city's Department of Public Works. Yana Kay takes us there.
This interactive water treatment exhibit gives visitors an inside look at how water is cleaned at the Hyperion Treatment Plant. It's all part of a new environmental learning center that promotes the importance of sustainability and of protecting the environment.
If we don't take care of the environment, the environment will not take care of us. My school asks for empty bottles and cans so that we can all take part in recycling.
The 20,000-square-foot facility located at the Hyperion Treatment Plant in Playa del Rey was officially opened to the public recently, with various city officials and community members taking a tour of what the center has to offer.
This place is wicked cool. I gotta say, the highlight of my day, I'm heartbroken at the idea of having to go back to an office later to have this view and to be able to go in there and play.
The new center is designed to increase the public's awareness of the impact of human activity on our surroundings through interactive, state-of-the-art exhibits. The goal is to empower everyone to do their part.
A sustainable life is possible here in the city of Angels. Indeed, it is the most important thing.
The building itself is energy-efficient with a green roof, solar panels, and a solar hot-water heater. It also features a stream and wetland, a hands-on experience that officials hope can make a difference, one recycled can at a time. I'm Yana Kay for LA this week.
And more on water, a summit to discuss how cities can continue to conserve H2O. A council member advocates for professional football to come to LA, and a long-awaited project finally breaks ground in Chinatown. These stories and more in City Beat. The one water leadership summit held recently in Los Angeles focused on water sustainability and explored how cities can promote smarter water solutions. While LA faces many water challenges, Mayor Eric Garcetti says residents have done their part to conserve water by voting on things like the Prop O Clean Water Bond.
I know you'll see some of the projects that we've done, that we've shown voters will vote for, that we've shown communities will embrace, and that have had the secondary impact of making sure that we sustain life here for some time.
Some of the nation's water conservationists also shared success stories on how their cities conserve water through integration, capture, and reuse. Los Angeles uses between 500 and 6 million gallons of water a day. The Los Angeles City Council Economic Development Committee recently discussed a motion brought forth by Councilmember Tom Labonge to bring the National Football League back to Los Angeles. His motion was seconded by six fellow council members.
But I'm going to continue to advocate. I'm working on a campaign to reach out to NFL players who are retired in Los Angeles, to have them remind them. It puzzles me why, out of 32 teams, one doesn't want to come here to sunny Southern California. And I would hope that they do, and we just wanted to let them know that, and the day will come.
The motion also encourages the league to bring two football teams to the city. A project in Chinatown in the planning stages during former Councilmember Ed Reyes's tenure as Councilmember of the 1st District is finally in construction now under new Councilmember Gil Sadio's watch. Sadio helped kick off construction for the Blossom Plaza development that had been held up for well over 10 years. The mixed-use complex will boast 237 housing units, including some low-income units, as well as retail and restaurant space. Sadio advocated for the additional $4 million needed to finance and secure the completion of the project, which is projected to be completed in the spring of 2016. Roosevelt High School students and their parents recently joined Councilman Jose Wezar to celebrate the installation of a new traffic light right outside the school at East Fourth and South Fickett Streets in Boyle Heights. Parents concerned over safety have worked with Wezar's office and that of the Department of Transportation for the last five years to get a light installed at the busy intersection. The Department of Transportation identified Proposition C dollars to fund the light installation along with prioritizing about a dozen other unfunded traffic signals near schools. Nearly 500 people came out recently to the Port Tech LA Expo to see how new green technology is helping shape LA's future. Yana Kay has more.
These may look like your typical everyday cars, but if you look closer, you'll see that they run on electricity. These cars and trucks were on display at the 4th Annual Port Tech LA Expo as examples of clean technology. The expo held at the port's Crafted Warehouse showcased sustainable port technologies that port officials say is vital to the future of the city.
We need to grow this port because by growing this port, we grow Los Angeles. By making this port more valuable, we grow Los Angeles in every portion of Los Angeles.
Mayor Eric Garcetti says this event promotes and advances clean port technology and also connects smaller tech companies with other green business leaders to help them grow and expand.
We've shown that when somebody gets an incubator experience, meaning they get a mentor, they get advice, access to capital, they go from being just an idea to a successful company at a much higher rate than most startups.
And to help the city's startups grow, a new city office has been created called the Economic Workforce and Development Department, which offers local businesses assistance and incentives.
Our task is to identify and to make the best use of our resources, both monetary and people, to drive an innovation and creativity agenda.
An innovative agenda that city officials hope will put the Port of Los Angeles ahead of all the others. I'm Yana Kay for LA this week.
Local students also attended the expo to learn about becoming scientists and engineers. In this week's list of things to do, Grand Park turns one, Totem in San Pedro, and the Taste of Encino. While the Disney Concert Hall has just turned 10, Grand Park Downtown turns one on Thursday, October 10. From 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. Thursday, enjoy a free concert on Grand Park's performance lawn at 200 North Grand Avenue. You're encouraged to bring a picnic. The concert is being held in conjunction with Daniel Pearl World Music Days, an international network of concerts that use the power of music to reaffirm our commitment to tolerance and humanity. Go to grandparkla.org for details. Your chance to catch the Cirque du Soleil show, Totem, is here. Totem opens on Friday, October 11 at 8:00 p.m. at the Port of Los Angeles Pier in San Pedro, located at 311 South Minor Street at Birth 46. It leaves for Irvine at the beginning of November. Combining mesmerizing acrobatic acts and stunning visual effects, Totem illustrates the evolutionary progress of the human species in an uplifting display of athleticism, comedy, and beauty. For tickets and other information, go to circedusole.com/totem. And a bit further north in Encino, on Sunday, October 13, the Encino Chamber of Commerce presents the 26th anniversary of the Taste of Encino from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. It takes place along Ventura Boulevard from Balboa to Aimstoy. There will be, of course, food, arts and crafts, a wellness pavilion, live music, and activities for kids. Admission is free, so bring the whole family. The LA Kings Ice Crew and LA Galaxy Star Squad will also be making a special appearance with great prize giveaways. Go to tastofencino.com. A portion of the proceeds raised will help fund local school and community projects. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. And as we just told you, the wait is almost over for Cirque du Soleil's Totem. But before the show can raise the curtains, it had to first raise the tent. Yana Kay takes us to the raising of the Big Top.
The famous blue and yellow Big Top tent is taking shape in San Pedro as crews prepare the massive arena for Cirque du Soleil's traveling show called Totem. Cirque officials say they're thrilled to be part of the growing community.
It's a community that's on the rise, and this area is certainly wonderful. It's just a glorious space, and we're very excited to be a part of this growing community.
Cirque du Soleil officials say it takes an army to get the tent ready. A total of 200 people work for eight days to set it up. The Big Top stands 66 feet high, and the four masts are 80 feet tall.
We take you through this magical journey. When you walk into the Big Top, you're kind of transported into this other world, which we hope takes you out of your daily routine of life.
Totem takes viewers on an incredible journey through mankind's evolution, a story that city officials say mirrors the transformation taking place in San Pedro itself.
Recently, we named a developer in redeveloping the LA waterfront. We have the USS Iowa here, Crafted, and to officially welcome Cirque du Soleil here in Los Angeles and San Pedro and the harbor area is fantastic.
The Big Top seats more than 2,600 people, who will be treated to acrobatic acts and stunning visual effects. Totem will be in San Pedro starting October 11 until November 10. I'm Yana Kay for LA this week.
After its run in San Pedro, Totem heads to Irvine and then to Santa Monica. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA this week.
Having the foresight to plan for my business...
To plan for my future...
To plan for my family provides a peace of mind.
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County...
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home.
Or near my school.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
G'day. Troy McCavan from North Hollywood. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Good morning. This is Tuesdays, the eighth day of October 2013. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bloominville, Bonn, Buscagno, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Weezer, Corretz, Corrigan, Labange, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, West, and Timmer are present in a call. Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Corrigan approves, seconded by Mr. O'Farrell.
Committee resolutions for approval.
Mr. Corretz approves, seconded by Mr. Weezer.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday. Now would be the time for the flag salute.
I ask you all to rise, and I would like to ask Mr. O'Farrell to lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. Mr. O'Farrell.
Place your hand over your heart and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Now, members, if you could direct your attention to the agenda. Madam Clerk, let's run through the agenda. Items one and two.
Before we begin, Mr. President, there's a request to continue item four until October 15th.
Any objection? So ordered.
Items one and two are items noted for public carrying. The Department of Building and Safety reports that items one, B, C, D, G, and L may be received and filed in as much as the liens have been paid.
Very good. Any cards?
Cards on item one A.
And any, any members calling anything special? So do we have to hold those? Mr. Bloominville, excuse me.
Items three and items 11 for Mr. Buscagno.
We'll get three and 11 in a minute. Very good. Thank you. Madam Clerk, on item one, do we have to hold that because of cards?
Yes, item one A.
One A. One A will hold on the balance we could vote on, correct?
Yes.
Let's open the roll on the balance. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
So ordered. Next item will be?
Items three through five are items which public carryings have been held.
And Mr. Bloominville did request that item three be held special for Mr. Buscagno. Any other specials, members? Number five, let's make it special because Rangers are very special. Let's, three and five, anything else?
There's nothing left in that section, Mr. President.
No cards. Let's open the roll.
Excuse me, Mr. President, there's no items remaining to be voted on on that section. Going to the next section, items six through 13 are items for which public carryings have not been held. Ten votes required for consideration.
That's for consideration. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Eleven eyes for consideration. All right, so this is six through 13?
Yes.
Okay, members, any specials six through 13?
For Mr. Buscagno.
Number 11, thank you, Mr. Bloominville, number 11 for Mr. Buscagno. And any cards?
Cards on items six, eight, nine, and 11.
Okay, and members, any specials on those? Let's open the roll on the balance, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, we're going to go to presentations right now. Mr. Weezer, are you ready? So Councilman of the 14th District, Jose Weezer, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and it's my great honor to be here once again. Presentation we make once a year in honor of the Braceros, a group of individuals who, under contract, worked in the United States during World War II when there was just, when there was a shortage of labor in the United States. These men worked in, on our railroads, in our agricultural fields to make sure the country continued to provide what it needed during World War II and to feed the country during World War II. After World War II ended, the program continued for some time and ended in the mid-'60s. I'm very proud to say that my father was a Bracero and some of my uncles were Braceros. The mid-central area of Mexico at that time during World War II and into the 1960s, we saw one of the largest migrations happen at any, at any time in the world from one part of the continent to another, but yet it hasn't been documented or talked about in our history books as much as it should, not only from a sociological perspective, anthropological perspective, but also simply to say thank you, to say thank you to these individuals who were just as important as those who fought in the battlefields during World War II. And although they did not belong to the United States at the time, were not citizens, they came through for the United States just as they were. The unfortunate part is that despite their service, despite all they did, the Mexican government at the time had taken some of their wages, and they have been under a battle with the Mexican government for years to get that back, some of that money. They've won some battles, they've got some of that money back, but the fight continues. So I want to thank all the ex-Braceros who are here, and I say "men" because it was all men who came to serve as Braceros, but they also had wives and children who were part of that experience as well. The women you see here are the former wives, are the wives of former Braceros, who also in one way are participated by allowing their husbands to come to work in the United States. We have come to call here in Los Angeles Bracero Day every September 29th, but throughout the world, we actually celebrate it as the International Bracero Day on September 29th as well. And I want to thank my good friend Baldomero Capiz, president of the La Unión Binacional, the Ex-Braceros, for all the work he has done to continue the struggle here in Los Angeles so that the Braceros not only continue to fight their legal fight with the Mexican government, but also provide some support and unity amongst the ex-Braceros that live in the United States. It amazes me, as I meet my peers, people my age, about how many of them say, hey, my dad was also a Bracero. I think Tony Garnes is a former, a former council member, now a congressman member, his father was a Bracero. And as I meet other people, you find more and more children who continue to live in the United States and grandchildren who continue to live in the United States who have some contact with the Braceros. And like I said earlier, there were many. So for that, I want to thank them, and I'll present them with the resolution soon, but I wanted to invite up to the microphone the leader of the movement here in Los Angeles, Baldomero Capiz. Bienvenido, Baldomero. Gracias. Let's give him a big round of applause, please.
Good morning. My name is Baldomero Capiz. I need translation. For me, I speak English. Okay? Honorable City Council of Los Angeles.
Honorable City Council of Los Angeles.
Estamos muy conmocionados.
We're very moved for being here.
Por este recibimiento que nos hizo nuestro amigo, el concejal del distrito 14, y nuestro líder del este de Los Angeles, el señor José Weezer.
We're very moved by the invitation and by the welcoming that our dear friend and our esteemed council member of District 14, council member Weezer, has extended to all of us.
Que nos ha apoyado en toda esta demanda que hemos tenido hacia el gobierno mexicano.
He has supported us all the way in our struggle with the Mexican government for the wages that were taken from us during the Bracero era.
Y también hacer una serie de muestras de cómo se actuó en este robo del fondo de ahorro campesino de los, de los ex-Braceros.
This is, he supported us also in our struggle and battle of these funds that were taken from us, our wages that were taken during the Bracero times where we worked, and they took our fun, our funds.
Quiero nada más mencionar cinco cosas fundamentales.
I would like to mention the five very fundamental following points.
Primero, que fue un incumplimiento de contrato.
First, it was a breach of contract.
Dos, incumplimiento de las obligaciones fiduciarias y violación de la confianza fiduciaria.
It was also a breach of their fiduciary obligations and a breach of their fiduciary trust.
Tres, rendición de cuentas.
They did not give us a clear accounting of our funding.
Cuatro, enriquecimiento ilícito, injusto, y retención indebida de los recursos de los Braceros.
And they became rich very unfairly, unjustly, and illegally due to the inadequate and illegal withholdings of the Braceros' wages.
Por eso está esta lucha incansable que tenemos.
That's the reason why we continue with this very tireless battle, as you can tell.
La mayoría de todos estos trabajadores tienen 90 a 100 años.
As you can see with your own eyes, the majority of these Bracero workers are now in the 90s, in the age of age.
Y lo que estamos proponiendo el día de hoy hacia ustedes, al Consilio de la Ciudad de Los Angeles.
And we're asking of you, council members, council members of the City Council of Los Angeles.
Al alcalde Garcetti.
We're also asking Mayor Garcetti.
Que se elabore un documento de, de la demanda.
To create or to.
Que tenemos hacia el gobierno mexicano.
To create a document with regards to the suit, or the lawsuit that we have against the Mexican government.
Creemos que el hecho de que establezcamos esta demanda desde acá con el apoyo de ustedes.
We truly believe that if we establish a lawsuit on this side with your support against the Mexican government.
Podamos tener una, una respuesta de, de nuestro gobierno que sea enriquecido, que está sometido en la corrupción.
Then that would most likely help us get an answer from the Mexican government, who has enriched themselves with our funds and who's corrupt as well.
Y que no ha cumplido con ese tratado de devolver a lo que les pertenece a cada uno de estos trabajadores.
And who has not answered nor given us back the money that belongs to our workers based on the treaty that was done years ago.
Y que hace ya 71 años.
And it's been 71 years since that treaty took place.
Este 29 de septiembre pasado, se cumplieron 71 años.
This past September 29th went on 71 years of breach.
Del pago de estos recursos a los Braceros.
Of contract under which the wages were supposed to be returned to the Bracero workers.
Queremos dar enormemente gracias al concejal José Weezer.
From the bottom of my heart, we want to thank Councilmember Weezer by giving an applause on behalf of the Braceros.
Por esa valentía que ha tenido.
Due to his great courage.
De apoyarnos siempre.
Of always supporting us.
En las buenas y en las malas.
In good times and in bad times.
Él siempre está con nosotros.
He's always with us, supporting us.
Ya que algunos de los ex-consejales que estaban aquí eran hijos de Braceros.
Since some, since some of the previous council members who were previously council members in the city were also sons of Braceros.
Y que nunca tuvimos eco. El único que nos ha apoyado total, formal, y valientemente ha sido el concejal José Weezer.
And we never saw much support from them. The one that has supported us completely, fully, and unconditionally is Councilmember Weezer.
Por eso es denominado estas palabras, para que haya mayor conciencia de parte de ustedes.
That's why I want to share the following expression so there can be a higher awareness on your behalf.
Hacia los más pobres.
Toward the, the people of lower income status.
La justicia es dar lo justo a los que lo merecen.
Justice is to be fair and give justice to those who truly deserve it.
Muchas gracias. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Muchas gracias. Very good, Mr. Weezer. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Mr. President. Gracias, señor Baldomero. And here once again, we want to present a resolution to Baldomero and all the ex-Braceros living in Los Angeles for the contributions to the United States, and you know, it was over 4 million Mexicans who answered the call when the United States needed support in its labor force here. And we are not only honoring them each year by saying, recognizing September 29th as Bracero Day, but we also working with this group to do a statue somewhere in the city of Los Angeles, and they are currently collecting keys and copper to make this statue a reality so that we recognize the contributions that Braceros have made to the United States and to the city of Los Angeles. Muchísimas gracias, amigo. Usted siempre nos ha enseñado con los Braceros que aquí en Los Angeles se puede perseguir la justicia, y aquí este gobierno sí le va a poner atención a sus residentes que viven en los Estados Unidos. Gracias. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weezer. Congratulations. If you could assist the group there, we're going to call Mr. Buscagno next. Madam Clerk, if you could, for the record, bring in the matter of Port Commissioner.
Item three, call special by Councilmember Bloominville? Or Councilmember Buscagno?
Mr. Buscagno, if you want to start off slow like Tina Turner.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. If I may, welcome Mr. Anthony Perosi to the table. We heard in committee this morning, the skills, the knowledge, the abilities that Mr. Perosi will bring forth to the Port of Los Angeles Harbor Commission. I want to thank Mayor Garcetti for getting it right once again at the port. He made a promise to appoint three local residents, and Mr. Perosi is one of the three before you today, colleagues. And as I said in committee, I'm so excited about this appointment. Anthony is not only a loving husband, he's an amazing father who gives back to the community through his efforts in fighting for Little League fields, starting a youth theater program, Tascalawag Productions, to being a soccer coach, baseball coach, football coach, basketball coach in the community. He is a son of Italian immigrants. He is joined by his loving wife, and incredible boys, and his mom and dad, and his sister, and his brother-in-law, and his colleagues at Boeing, and his dear friends. I'm so proud of this, this opportunity here. Anthony, tell us a little bit about yourself and what you told us in committee for our colleagues here in council, and what experience you bring to this commission. I also want to recognize Dr. Geraldine Nats for being here as well. Dr. Nats, thank you for your commitment in improving the port, both making sure our cargo remains at the port, but also growing the port green, and also putting the port on the map when it comes to redevelopment efforts. So, Mr. Perosi, tell us a little about yourself for our colleagues here and what you plan on bringing to the table.
Thank you, Mr. Buscagno. Thank you, distinguished council members. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you today and this opportunity to serve the city of Los Angeles. I go back to my Italian roots, 1920. My mom's dad, Dominic Costa, came here from Ischia, Italy. My father, Tony, came here in 1956, not knowing what the future was going to bring for them, but took a chance on America. And what they found was the importance and the opportunity on a local waterfront in San Pedro. And now it's my opportunity to serve this great city of Los Angeles and become a Los Angeles Harbor Commissioner to take the waterfront to even grander, a grander future. I am currently an executive at the Boeing Company. I actually build, test, and launch satellites. I've been in that environment for the last 23 years, and I became an engineer, graduated from Cal Poly Pomona in 89, and I also graduated from Loyola Marymount with master's engineering in 2000. But my passion is.
Pedro Pirate, right?
I'm a Pedro Pirate, class of 1983, 30-year reunion on Saturday night. So, and anyways, I'm excited to leverage my experiences in the community and the Boeing Company to make the waterfront, the waterfront of the future.
So, Mr. Perosi, in, in discussing the challenges of, of the Port of Los Angeles, what do you anticipate here? And we need to ensure that the port remains the number one trade gateway for cargo here in, in our country, and we have some issues down to south with the widening of Panama Canal. In this grand, awesome opportunity here, how do you, what do you, what do you plan on bringing to the table here in, in addressing those concerns and ensuring that we keep the jobs here local, that impact not only locally but regionally and nationally?
Yeah, so we have to remember that for every, every one job on the waterfront, there's about 10 to 11 jobs created across the region. So it is important that we remain competitive, whether that is the time it takes to take a piece of cargo off of a ship and get it onto our, our roads to its final destination, or to the efficiencies we need to work to make things better on the waterfront are all key. The other element for our future is the waterfront development, the opportunity to redo Ports of Call, to, to kick off here Altis Sea and bring good R and D jobs, research and development. I think we have an opportunity to have a triple play with our waterfront. One, good union, paying jobs with our ILWU, retail for our young, and the redevelopment of Ports of Call, and then the higher-end knowledge-based jobs with the potential and opportunity for Altis Sea for research and development.
And a great point. And you mentioned in committee how the redevelopment efforts, Ports of Call, Altis Sea, bringing in USS Iowa, is the, they should be seen as the eighth terminal.
Yeah, so there are seven terminals at the port, but I think, I think we should treat the waterfront development, Altis Sea, as the eighth terminal and develop it, develop it for the future.
If you look at ports across the country, around the world, these are destinations. If you look at what's happening, or what happened in Seattle, Baltimore, San Francisco, other ports around the world, they are destinations. And colleagues, as we know, the tourism dollars benefit our general fund, and we need to make that, continue to make that commitment. Do you, do you, I just want to hear your commitment in ensuring that the port moves forward on waterfront redevelopment by continuing to improve on the infrastructure.
Yeah, the waterfront redevelopment is key, so the port has to prioritize and meet its commitment to build parking structures, improve the roadway, improve Sampson Way for access to the water. That's all critical. That's the backbone of the waterfront redevelopment so we can build something very grandiose down there to bring people, like I always like to say, we need visitors not just from 30 minutes away, but we need visitors from 30 hours away to come from across the globe to visit our great Los Angeles waterfront.
And as you can, as you hear, colleagues, Anthony is an incredible commission appointment. We thank Mayor Garcetti. And keep in mind, he has his family in the San Pedro area. He's raising his three boys who are here, and the environment we need to address to ensure that we continue to reduce emissions in the port, but at the same time, grow in the port so that our friends and families, members that work the docks, remain at the docks. So thank you for your commitment to serving our city by serving on this commission. I'm so proud of you. We're so proud of you, Jay and I. We love you and we thank you for your service, and we're so excited to move forward on this appointment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buscagno, and Mr. Bonn, and I wholeheartedly agree with you. You said we had it in committee. This is a great commissioner. I was thinking instead of eight terminals, give the Iowa number eight, Ports of Call number nine, and City Dock number 10. So you get three at a price of one, as you said, a trifecta all the way. Dr. Nats, give Dr. Nats a big hand too, greeting the port, all that history. But here's a man who's going to bring neighborhood history to the port. There's no speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Fourteen eyes. So ordered. Fourth with. Congratulations. Item number three. Item five. Will you read it into the record?
Item five, call special by Councilmember Labange.
Good. On this item right here, I'm going to call on Mr. Fuentes. We do have three cards. This was heard in committee, but the three cards, I think, are Mr. Van Dusen, Ms. Reichenbach, Mr. Abelson. Are the speakers here? They're not here. Item number five. It was heard in committee. You got one minute unless you want to say anything. I'm going to give you one minute because I like the Rangers, and I'm not going to speak to it. Go ahead, introduce yourself.
Mark, Mark Vargas. I'm a resident in the Beechwood Canyon area. I want to thank you for your leadership on this. I'm honored to live in a fantastic neighborhood. We have city treasures with the Hollywood sign and the Griffith Park in my backyard, and I'm very pleased to share that with the entire city and the entire world. But I would really appreciate, and I love this, the, the study and the analysis so that we can really make sure that as we're sharing these resources, we're paying attention to public safety, we're paying attention to management and upkeep and maintenance of our, of our historic treasures that we have there. We love to share our neighborhood. We want to just make sure it doesn't get overrun and ruined. We want to preserve it for future generations. Thank you.
Very good points. Thank you very much. The other cards and the speaker, they're not here. So note them, Patrice. Mr. Fuentes for the special amendment, friendly amendment. Mr. Reagan is here, I think, for Wreckin Parks.
Very good. If we could have staff come to the center of the table, if that's okay, because I want to verbally, thank you, Mr. Labange, for allowing me to add this friendly amendment. The motion calls for a report for 60 days, very important motion to figure out how to reestablish a robust Ranger program in the city of Los Angeles. So I wanted to instruct the Department of Wreckin Parks to include a report back on reestablishing the chief park ranger position and appointing a California Peace Officer Standards and Training Certified Chief Park Ranger for the city of Los Angeles, a post-certified for the Park Ranger Division, and an analysis of the impacts regionally and citywide since the elimination of the previous chief park ranger position. There's no speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Fourteen ayes. So ordered, fourth win. Congratulations. Item number three. Will you read it into the record?
Item five, called special by Councilmember LaBonge.
Good. On this item right here, I'm going to call on Mr. Fuentes. We do have three cards. This was heard in committee, but the three cards, I think, are Mr. Van Dusen, Ms. Reigenbach, Mr. Abelson. Are the speakers here? They're not here. Item number five. It was heard in committee. You got one minute unless you want to say anything. I'm going to give you one minute because I like the Rangers, and I'm not going to speak to it. Go ahead, introduce yourself.
Mark Vargas. I'm a resident in the Beechwood Canyon area. I want to thank you for your leadership on this. I'm honored to live in a fantastic neighborhood. We have city treasures with the Hollywood sign and the Griffith Park in my backyard, and I'm very pleased to share that with the entire city and the entire world. But I would really appreciate, and I love the study and the analysis so that we can really make sure that as we're sharing these resources, we're paying attention to public safety, we're paying attention to management and upkeep and maintenance of our historic treasures that we have there. We love to share our neighborhood. We want to just make sure it doesn't get overrun and ruined. We want to preserve it for future generations. Thank you.
Very good points. Thank you very much. The other cards, the speaker, they're not here, so note them, Patrice. Mr. Fuentes, for the special amendment, friendly amendment. Mr. Reagan is here, I think, for Wreckin Parks.
Very good. If we could have staff come to the center of the table, if that's okay, because I want to verbally, thank you, Mr. LaBonge, for allowing me to add this friendly amendment. The motion calls for a report for 60 days, very important motion to figure out how to reestablish a robust Ranger program in the city of Los Angeles. So, I wanted to instruct the Department of Wreckin Parks to include a report back on reestablishing the chief park ranger position and appointing a California Peace Officer Standards and Training Certified Chief Park Ranger for the city of Los Angeles, a post-certified for the Park Ranger Division, and an analysis of the impacts regionally and citywide since the elimination of the previous chief park ranger position, understanding full well that a lot of this was driven by the budget. But if we can begin talking about restoration, Mr. President, I would greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Reagan, any comment?
Not really, council member. We'll be happy to include that amendment.
And be back. There's a lot of interest in the Rangers. We all want it. Sorry for those other speakers who filled out the cards. We called their name for the record. Please add that. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Fourteen ayes.
Adopted as amended.
As amended. Thank you. Next item.
Item 1A, called special for cards.
1A, and a public comment card on this. We have 1A. Tony, I want to say it correctly, Esfahini?
Esfahani.
Sorry, Tony, followed by John Walsh and Adrian Howard. Please, go ahead, Tony.
Good morning. My name is Tony Esfahani. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. In March of 2010, there was a letter order to comply to clean a vacant land with the wrong address. They mailed it to a wrong address. By the time I got it, it was through a phone call. It was in June of 2010. So, already the compliance date was, I was already in default before even I got the order. We did comply. I sent everybody letters. We cleaned the lot. It's a vacant lot. We removed the abandoned truck that was there and a container, and we cleaned the lot. We keep maintaining this lot on a weekly basis. It's a vacant lot in San Pedro. Thanks to our neighbors, they keep dumping trash over there, and we keep cleaning it. The city asked us to remove a retaining wall on that property, which we cannot. The retaining wall is holding the apartment building next door, their wall. So, I sent pictures, and we cleaned the lot. We're cleaning it on a weekly basis. I have receipts to show you. As of two weeks ago, again, there was somebody dumped a load of trash there, then I had my guys to go pick it up. And we didn't hear anything from the city till this notice in August of 2013, which came to the right address this time. And now they want to find me, I don't know, $2,000, almost $3,000. And I just don't think that is fair. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have, I think it's Adrian Howard? And then I know we have John Walsh, and we have constituent.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Go there immediately. We support the property owner here. Waive the lien. Look, we live in a world where the city doesn't pay its debts, the county doesn't pay its debts, the state doesn't pay its debts, the United States doesn't pay its debts, the rest of the world doesn't pay its debts, and the United Nations doesn't pay its debts. So, let's, this poor guy here, $2,727, he cleans up. If you paid him what you pay Bureau of Sanitation, you would owe him money. So, let's just forget about, in fact, I will play the 93 cent part of it if you waived the $2,727 part of it. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, next, is that Adrian I see? Please come forward.
Good morning, council, and thank you, Your Honor, and thank you for hearing my case. Yes, I was a levy to lien. I first, it first was a fine at the time because I had my late husband's van in my own private driveway with a flat tire, which was frustrating, very frustrating, when there's so many other things that could be addressed. I was, at that time, still a resident of Councilwoman Janice Hans's office. I went to her office for assistance, and I talked to Bill Shelton, Building and Safety. I resolved the situation, pushed the van back into the deep part of my carport, talked to Ed Lar, the late Leo Fuller, at the constituent office, thinking this is resolved now. I came home from a church conference three weeks ago, and there's a notice posted on my door for nearly $3,000 levy, a fine, a lien. Of course, I was flabbergasted. I'm a widow. I have two children in high school, two that have graduated from college, and I'm on a fixed income. I'm, you know, disabled bus driver. It's frustrating. All throughout my district, it's all kind of violations and trash cans that aren't filled, picked up from a month at a time until the young people there are on some type of, you know, criminal offense or come and clean the neighborhood up. And I do feel like the little guy being picked up. I mean, two years have passed. I thought it was resolved with Bill Shelton, and I did comply by pushing the van deep into my carport. The fact that it has escalated and doubled into a, I mean, nearly tripled into nearly a $3,000 lien for a widow and a homeowner in Watts is very frustrating because all throughout Watts, we don't get the same attention as San Pedro or the other parts. And it's frustrating. And this will cause me to lose my house, this fine, if I was a major.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll try to deal with that. Okay, do I have Mr. Constituent?
Thank you for helping me, sir.
You're welcome.
Good morning, council, and those of you in the city of Los Angeles. Once again, we're hearing protests about appeals and objections to the Department of Building and Safety. Steve Ongeli, if I pronounce that correctly? As you may hear, the petitions of your constituents requiring certain violations to be removed relative to proceed a lien for nuisance abatement. How much more longer will the city obstruct your constituents? And when I say obstruct, I'm talking about these liens, liens that you force upon people in this city who are having a hardship with the economy. The economy's not any better than it was one year ago, 10 years ago, or when Zuma Dog pointed out. These fraudulent liens against your constituents shouldn't be an avenue of creating money for the city. It shouldn't be a sludge bag for you to dump these lien monies into it and then funnel it where? Obviously, there's a problem with the account because you're putting these bogus liens on people's homes. As the lady mentioned, her tire had a flat tire. It was in her driveway, off the street. Now, if there was rodents and debris on it, that's understandable, but she said she had a flat tire. Going back on this subject, code violations and annual inspections and costs. Since when has the city of Los Angeles gone out to Boyle Heights and done inspections? Or in Compton? All of a sudden, now you have to use your enforcement?
Mr. President, he is not talking about this specific.
Stay on the topic, Mr., I mean, Mr. Constituent.
Public accommodations must comply with the basic nondiscrimination requirements that prohibit these types of liens to your constituents. Thank you, Dion.
Thank you. Okay, let's prepare to vote on these items. And I think it's Ms. Howard. We'll deal with your situation in one second. So, let's, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, now, Ms. Howard's item was actually 1A, 1E, that we had already voted on, so we're going to ask for reconsideration on that issue. So, now we'll vote on that. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, now, was this the only item in 1E? Okay, so what we're going to do, Adrian, continue this to a week from tomorrow, which is the 16th of October, to give you more time to have discussions with the council office. Okay, so this will be continued from today till October 16th. No, you're welcome. Okay, let's move on to the next item. Madam Clerk?
Item six, called special for cards.
Okay, item six, called special by Mr. Walsh and Mr. Herman. Mr. Walsh passes Mr. Herman. Item six.
If I may be correct, I know this is going into the subject of item six relative removing of various properties, but due to the fact that one specific property at 4,200 Verde Street continues to have a barrier, and there seems to be no action or recourse, the city...
Mr. President, he is not talking about these specific sites.
Okay, Mr. Herman, you know that that's what you have to do, so you've got to speak pertaining to items A and B.
So, under REAP, the question is this: Has the city taken its time inasmuch as any owner to remove and assist people who have these liens under the REAP program for violations that were provided by proof of compliance? Yeah, there's proof of compliance. Yeah, an inspector went out there and inspected it. But now the question is, for you, councils, for any one of you, when will you be consistent on such actions under REAP and follow it to the guidelines of city regulations and based on city ordinances? So, the people, the public, you constituents, all of you, will understand that this is totally unfair at a time of a recession. Thank you. Hold my time.
Thank you. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, now we'll go, Madam Clerk, to item eight, which is Donna Pierman and John Walsh on item eight.
Again, we're talking about doing Farmers Field and trying to get us a football team. So, I just wanted to say that I'm not sure whether we can, what I'm against is the cost of having the Convention Center built up. We don't exactly where this money's coming from when there's, when there's a lot more need in a lot more areas. And you don't even know which football team will go here and whether this football team will even stay. We have not had very good luck with teams staying. We've had two teams, the Raiders and the Rams, both leave on us. So, you know, we have a lot of people that we needed to fix our streets, we needed to fix our sidewalks, we need money to help the people so they don't get on REAP, people so they won't have to be on liens. Instead, they want to send it on to Convention Center and getting us, spending our money on entertainment. So, and we're not even sure that this football team will even stay here or whether the revenue that's given from this team will ever even, the constituents will ever see a penny of this. So, I think we need to send it back to committee and before we even think about, and let people know exactly what this is going to cost and what is being perceived and what type of work you're going to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
Look at my face. This is a smirk, okay? This is a smirk. I sat here for a year while you talked and brought out these beautiful renderings of Farmers Field as if it existed. It never existed. I was the only one who got up here and said, "There's no money for it. Where's Tim Liewke? He's in Canada." This was your biggest blunder, Farmers Field. You spent millions of dollars and hours preparing Farmers Field. It didn't exist. Remember Ray Bradbury's Mars is Heaven, where the astronauts show up on Mars, and it's heaven? All their relatives who are dead come, and then one person on the astronaut says, "This is all a phony. The Martians control our minds." And that's what happened here. Everyone thought that this really existed. Farmers Field exists as much as my great-grandchildren. They don't exist, okay? They never were. It never was going to happen. And you sat here and voted on it over and over and over again, wishing doesn't make it so. And when I got up here, now, you don't listen to me, but the people out there, you know, they have these long shots, realized Farmers Field doesn't exist. And you know what? You can tear all the Farmers Field pictures up. Farmers Insurance, they're pulling out. Everybody's pulling out of LA. And so what I'm telling you right now is, don't believe any of their future plans. It's all about making money now. It's about expansion of government. And all this is a communication, and it is official death certificate for Farmers Field. It isn't going to happen. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, now, Mr. City Attorney or Madam Clerk, I want to move to Special One by Mr. Mitch O'Farrell. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since the posting of today's agenda, the LAPD has requested that council offer a reward for information leading to the arrest of a suspect in a hit-and-run crime that killed Quimonte McKenzie at 6,700 Santa Monica Boulevard in Hollywood on Friday, September 27th at 3:30 a.m. Immediate action is required to apprehend the suspect for the safety of the community. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Okay, let's vote quickly on the findings. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, Mr. O'Farrell.
Mr. President, colleagues, I want to thank you in advance of supporting this reward motion for the arrest and conviction of another hit-and-run criminal who killed Quimonte McKenzie, who was struck after she stepped off the curb at the 6,700 block of Santa Monica Boulevard just east of Highland on September 27th. Investigators are looking for a light-colored, older-model Ford Thunderbird. You're going to hear a few more details about that from Detective White in a moment. According to the reports, the victim's driver's license identified McKenzie as a male, but friends who knew her as a female referred to her as Unique. In the LGBT community, too often, the T in the acronym stands for a community that is marginalized, maligned, and misunderstood. We are standing here today to make sure that this community is represented, that Unique is represented, and that her killer is brought to justice. I asked the LAPD for this reward because Unique is important to this community and important to all of us, just like everyone else. She has a family, a mother who is distraught at what happened. They don't live in Los Angeles. They're not able to be here, but it's important to do this nonetheless. I have Detective White from the LAPD who's going to give a little bit of information.
Detective.
Good morning. In this particular case, we're looking for an older-model T-Bird, but in the city of Los Angeles, we have a lot of hit-and-runs that aren't solved, basically because we need the community's help. Without the community's help, some of those cases will stay, remain open. They won't be closed, and no one will be apprehended or convicted of those crimes. So, please, if anybody has information in reference to this hit-and-run or any other hit-and-runs that have caused severe or fatality injuries for the victims, please call our Crime Stoppers at 1-800-222-TIPS, 1-800-222-TIPS, which the last four is 8477, or please text any tips to the number 274637, which is CRIME, C-R-I-M-E-S, and start the text with LAPD. And please describe whatever that you think that you can help in those investigations. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McKenzie has a community behind her, and that community is standing with... Ms. McKenzie has a community behind her, and that community is standing with me this morning. And part of that community are representatives from Biennestar, who have a Hollywood location. And I'd like to ask Albert Vasquez to say a few words.
Hello, good morning. So yeah, we're here. Part of the community, we have-- at Biennestar, we have a couple of centers in South LA, Manchester and Broadway, and East LA, Hollywood, Van Nuys. So we're standing behind the council member today in support of this reward.
Thank you all for coming out. Mr. O'Farrell--
And last--
You have a colleague, too, that wants to speak. I just wanted--
Wonderful. We'll do. And before we get to that, I just want to invite Karina Samala, also representing the LGBT--
Go right ahead.
--today, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. First of all, I'd like to thank the council, the City of Los Angeles, and LAPD for helping us solve this crime. And I'd like to acknowledge also those who are out there to please come forward so that we can get this perpetrator to justice. Thank you in behalf of the transgender community.
Thank you for coming out. Thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, before my colleague speaks, I just want to acknowledge my colleague Joe Busciano for introducing the motion that will set a standard for the arrest, capture, and conviction with a permanent incentive for these types of arrests. So with that, you know, we have a real problem on our hands. We've had 20,000 hit-and-runs over the last four years in the city of Los Angeles. Seems like we're doing this every day, if not every week. So we need to bring added focus to this, and I look forward to supporting you, Joe, on that and my colleagues. Thank you.
Mr. Busciano.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. O'Farrell, for acknowledging the issue of hit-and-run crimes in the city of Los Angeles. I want to thank the West Traffic Division for coming forward and also thank our media partners for putting out the word, putting out the information. You know, colleagues, we only have approximately 32 detectives on four of our traffic bureaus. If traffic detectives don't have good, solid follow-up information, they are going to put that case aside and file it. We hope and pray by having this motion approved that someone will come forward. So we send a message to those cowards in the city of Los Angeles, the motorists who fail to stop and render aid. Mr. Krikorian put it best: An accident is an accident. The minute you flee the scene of an accident, it becomes a crime. So thank you. Thank you to the LGBT community as well for coming forward. Ms. McKenzie obviously has family that don't live in the area, but let's help them with providing closure by offering this reward so that someone who saw something that night on Santa Monica Boulevard can step forward.
Okay, Mr. O'Farrell, before we vote, we do have a public comment card. Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Walsh passes. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, let's move on to the next item, which is item nine, called special by Mr. Walsh. Please come forward, item nine.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. For those following along on the agenda, whenever they want to cover something up, that's just a communication from the chair to cover up a big screw-up. There's no vote here. It's a communication. Okay, note and file: CLA's report, the evaluation of the Los Angeles Convention Center facilities. They're not even going to talk about it because the CLA's report is an indictment. I ask everyone in every city in America, just for fun, come to L.A. and take a look at our convention center. I mean, it's this huge, huge, empty space. I mean, you feel dwarfed in it. The rooms actually are tiny. Even the mice are hunchbacked, the rooms are so small. It's pathetic. It is really something out of Sam Yordi's world, okay? Mayor Sam Yordi's world. It's an embarrassment to the world. Why do you think you're losing all of these conventions? You're losing these conventions because no one wants-- and it's stuck way the hell out where nobody is. It's a mess. You should all get up and apologize for it. And as much as you've tried to get somebody to throw $100 million into that rat hole, Farmers Field next to it, it's all-- as my African-American '60s friends used to say, "You be tripping. You be tripping if you think you're going to get anybody to put money there. You be tripping if you think anyone is going to come there." Anytime outside of L.A., people laugh at the convention center. Ha, ha, ha. HollywoodHighlands.org for the truth.
All right, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, let's now move on, I believe, to item 11. There are no cards on item 11. If I could ask Mr. Busciano to come to-- oh, you're already there.
Quick, yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, joining me on this yet another reward motion on a hit-and-run crime is the Ayala family from the San Pedro Wilmington--
Can I stop you for one second, Joe?
Yes, sir.
Somebody moved the cards. I do have cards on item 11, and when Mr. Busciano finishes, I will call those cards. Mr. Busciano, please continue.
Thank you, Mr. President. So joining me here on yet another reward motion for a fatal hit-and-run crime is the Ayala family from the Wilmington to San Pedro communities. Three weeks ago, 26-year-old Emmanuel Ayala lost his life in a senseless hit-and-run crime. As you heard from Mr. O'Farrell there, in the city of Los Angeles, annually, we experience 20,000 hit-and-run crimes, about 30, 35 involve fatalities. Manny was one of now 33 people killed year-to-date as a result of a cowardly act of an irresponsible driver who left him dying on Pacific Coast Highway in Wilmington. Let me paint a picture for you. The video clearly showed the motorists knowingly hitting Manny Ayala on PCH, stopped her vehicle, got out of her vehicle, and clearly saw Manny on the street and decided to take off. I want this reward to help LAPD find this driver so that we can ultimately bring closure to the Ayala family and put this suspect into custody. Just last year-- I'm sorry, two nights last night, we had another fatal hit-and-run in Encino, and thankfully, the efforts of the community, the LAPD and our media partners, the motorists turned himself in. As you know, colleagues, we have-- I proposed a hit-and-run motion that's going to offer standing reward motions for hit-and-runs involving property damage, injuries, and ultimately fatalities. So I ask for your support on this, and we hope and pray this motorists will come forward and so that we can bring closure to the Ayala family joining me here today. Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues.
We all pray for that, Mr. Busciano. Mr. Herman? Mr. Herman, did you want to speak on this item? Mr. Herman, come on up. And is all he has left is a minute, Madam Clerk? Okay.
I'll keep it brief. 35 fatalities in the city of Los Angeles. There must be more action to apprehend anyone, whether it's under the influence of alcohol, drugs, or recreational drugs. The whole point is this: If the city of Los Angeles continues to issue out permits for alcoholism, then you should be at fault on part of it. But let me stick to the topic. My apologies and my sympathy out to the family of the Ayalas. To lose someone so close to you, it's heartbreaking. And for anyone who suffers the loss of a loved one or has someone in your family who's sick, my warmest sympathy and condolences in any way, in any manner, because it's terrible to lose someone you love. Thank you.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, what's before this council now?
Mr. President, that takes counsel to general public comment.
Okay, well, let's go right there. I do have a card that I just cannot make out the name. I'll ask someone to try to help me with this, but I'll call on Donna Pierman, John Walsh, and Olga Hall.
Congratulations to the Los Angeles Dodgers, who beat the Atlanta Braves. Anyway, I should be speaking in Van Nuys. This is my day off from work, even when we don't have furlough. So first, we need to reopen video conference in Van Nuys and San Pedro. This is the 21st century. This should be easy to do for the 21st century. It's not right to ask people to travel two to three hours-- maybe two hours to get here, perhaps up to three, and two to three hours to get back to speak for two to seven minutes when they have an area a lot closer facility to them. You are shutting off Miriam's right to speak. It's very difficult for her to get here, to spend all that time just to speak for two to seven minutes. Once every other month, it's not enough for people to tell how they feel. Norrie Martinez, Bob Blumenfeld, Philip Fuentes, Bernard Parks, and Joe Busciano is for reopening it. Please, I ask Mitch O'Farrell-- our mayor and former Councilman Garcetti is for reopening it. Please support us. Mike Bonin, you're in my work district. Please support us. Gilbert Sadio and Corinne Price, you're new. Don't you want to see video conferencing? Please support us. Also, I'd like to tell people that this shutout, shutdown of the federal government is over Obamacare. We need to get the federal employees working. Many of the people depend on us, and it's costing a lot more money to shut us down. It's hurting millions of people who depend on federal government, and I don't want to be paid for staying home. I want to work. So I'm just saying that's reopen video conferencing, and we need to get the federal government up and running. So please tell your congressman--
Thank you, Donna. So John-- after John, did I call you, Mr. Herman? Okay, so after Mr. Herman, Adrian Howard, and then I have a Garofolo, I believe. Oh, Olga, where's Olga? Yeah, just pile up after Mr. Herman. Go right ahead, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Did you hear that? 20,000 hit-and-runs in this city. That's almost the number of people who live in Beverly Hills. This is what I'm asking. On the blood of all 20,000, this reward system isn't working, Chief Parks. Tell me, how many have you arrested and convicted out of those 20,000 people? How many? I asked the city. You won't give me that. I'll have to file a report on that. Mr. Weezer, accused of sexual harassment, his trial behind closed doors continues. Arson, Columbia Square, CBS Building in Hollywood, Friday the 13th, a gigantic fire. Only the reason it wasn't burned down to the ground was the fire department. Go there now! It hasn't been boarded up! Prove me a liar! The windows are open. People are living in there. They are making-- the city council, an open invitation for the arsonist to strike again. If there's an arson, you boarded up. Where are the contractors? Where are the people who own it? They want to burn it down. This is called demolition by arson. It's part of the real estate game in L.A. Okay, come to our website. As you know, this-- Weezer's office is in Boyle Heights. He claims it is bewitched that there is a demon named Votar who is there, and Sergeant Carlos Lopez, who used to work for you, Mr. Parks, under you, is now a LAPD sergeant and a freelance exorcist. Can you wonder why the city is crazy? And you wonder, "I may be crazy, but compared to you people, and I don't cause any harm by my craziness," HollywoodHighlands.org. Hail--
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, so who do I have? Mr. Herman and Olga? And then we'll get to the other folk. Anyway, go right ahead.
Fellow residents, citizens of Los Angeles. Title II covers all activities of state and local governments. And now that Mr. Weezer is here, Mr. Weezer, 2230 Norfolk Street Hazard Park. We, the public, still wish and want to have that park accessible to people with disabilities. A lot of you were shocked last week or a week ago when Daniel Garcia stood up here off his wheelchair. Not everyone is disabled and dysfunctional or crazy. But the point is this: A guide to disability rights laws. Please follow those guidelines. The barrier that impedes the sidewalk has been there for longer than six, six, six years. That's a very long, long time. So let's get it cleared so that people may use the public sidewalk. Going back on top of that note, why is it, Mr. Weezer, that Mr. Kevin DeLeone's office can send us town hall meetings? Town hall meetings, folks, here it is. We still wish to meet with you in Boyle Heights and exert our frustrations and the inability of your office to provide us the services, the activities, and the programs we need in Boyle Heights, El Surino, Lincoln Heights, Eagle Rock, and any portion that I forgot to mention in your District 14. And by the way, folks, yes, the tragedies on the streets are getting worse. And what can we do to make them better? Let's stop permitting alcoholism by giving restaurants, liquor stores, markets more and more and more permits. And by the way, in Sacramento, they passed a law that says you are responsible to fix sidewalks and streets. But yet, in the news, LA Times reports that the city of Los Angeles has the worst streets to drive on, the worst streets to walk on. Do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Olga. And then, I guess, followed by Ms. Howard and Mr. Garofolo and Richard Robinson. Yes?
Good morning, council members and Mr. President. From the very beginning, Otter fabricated many myths about the Southwest Museum, and the followers, like a cult, believe the propaganda. Otter's myth and politicians-- and politicians say that the community is divided. Those that know the truth have always supported the restoration of the Southwest Museum as a world-class museum, that it deserves to be. The Otter, along with the mayor, Virrey Regosa, and Councilman Weezer, have the Southwest Museum-- I mean, the Southwest Society Forum is supposed to have been a-- Gold Ribbon Committee to raise funds for the Southwest Museum, yet it was used to sabotage every effort of the Friends of the Southwest Museum. You need to learn the truth. You cannot vote just because your council member tells you to. You have to learn the truth. This is about saving the first museum in Los Angeles. Don't just follow your friends. Be a leader. And here are informations. These are videos that you can look at and start learning what the truth is. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, please, come on down. Okay, please, come on down. Yes, Ms. Howard.
Once again, counsel, thank you for allowing me to exercise my rights as a citizen. And I want to commend you for the work that you are doing. I worked with you, Mr. President, with the Gobble Gobble Turkey giveaway and the movies in the park and with Chief Parks and Ms. Bobby, the Commissioner of Families and Children, and you recently came out to my church, Church of Christ. And Mr. Price has opened an invitation to talk to the seniors at a luncheon that my church will be attending, the Figueroa Church of Christ. I know the good works that you do also. I'm not going to come just beat up on the negative things. We're blessed to live in a city that has things. There's some cities and countries that only have running water, and people can't say nothing because they'll be killed in the night. What I'm saying to you is, I just want fair, equal representation. If my taxes are paying the same taxes, it's frustrating when the street cleaner doesn't come for four weeks. You don't see him in four weeks, four Thursdays, but yet you see the parking enforcement giving tickets. That's frustrating. It's frustrating when you, in the USC corridor, and you see Figueroa being cleaned up so meticulously, one little napkin being picked up every hour, I mean, every five minutes. But then, four blocks, five blocks down at your church, Figueroa Church of Christ, is filth. Or when you borderline two districts, like I spoke to Ms. Han and Ms. Perry about this. You know, it borderline Chinatown or Little Tokyo, but then you go further down Central Avenue, and it's like no one cares. Or you borderline San Pedro and Watts, and we had trash cans that haven't been picked up in three, four weeks, only when the young people are being on some type of punishment or from the youth corps. I just want equal representation. I want fairness. And I know you all are doing a good job and trying to do the best you can, but just have fairness. You know, if I'm going to get a fine for having a van in the driveway one inch, and I go to San Pedro, I go somewhere else and see the same thing, it's frustrating.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Garofalo, followed by Richard Robinson.
Good morning. I wish to call your attention to last Friday, the situation, if you will, of SOS, show over substance. During this, that meeting, there was a conversation with regard to the situation in Washington, DC. And Coretts bad-mouthed the Tea Party, and I am not a member of the Tea Party. And Wesson acknowledged him by saying, "I'm glad you said that." Now, you do not have that right to voice that from, I mean, you have the right to say, to think and believe it, but to not address it over the microphones when you're live. Now, I want you to know that I have personally, I live just one bus spot away from San Fernando, and I can go shopping there as well as in the area of LA proper. And I personally know of over 30,000 people who are doing that because of this incident. Now, as I said, I am not a member of this, but I am more attuned to it because of your inactions, for want of a better word. I also want to say, let Blumenthal know that he is nothing more than a puppet of special interests and has proven that over and over.
Richard, come on forward.
Mr. President, members, I put my speech away. I was on the Third Street promenade yesterday in Santa Monica, and the guy, sir, he accuses President Obama of being the Antichrist. The government collapse is a misnomer. What we see is somewhat predictable, given the Machiavellian nature of Republican versus Democrat politics today in Washington, DC. It's somewhat predictable. It's another banner boner, the lack of collegiality, the lack of bipartisanship. Broad takes a step forward, Boehner kicks him back a couple steps. That's why we're looking to north. Next November, solution will be had. The voters are going to say, "No. Americans don't like the Congress of the United States of America for its truculence." So what am I saying? It was predictable. The budget impasse is going to be broken. The impasse will be broken. Business as usual will proceed, but the attacks against our president are insipid. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. That ends general public comment. I believe sergeants, this gentleman says he's turned in a card. Usually, once we start, your card wasn't in when we started public comment, so it has to be in. I don't let people submit them less later. So I'm sorry, Terry. Next time, just submit your card a little sooner, okay? And I will gladly let you speak. Okay, Mr. Buscaino, I think you wanted to reconsider an item?
Yes, sir. Item 1E, please.
Okay, let's vote again?
I'm sorry, 1I.
Okay, 1I.
Yes, reconsider that for continuance.
So let's, on reconsideration of 1I, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Okay, Mr. Buscaino.
If we can continue the item, 1I to October 16th, please.
Without objection. Okay, Madam Clerk, that brings us where?
Counsel has motions for posting the referral.
They are posted and referred. Announcements, members? Mr. Fuentes.
Mr. President, I just wanted to remind my colleagues, or actually notify my colleagues, if Mr. Labonge here, he would know what I'm talking about here, that the Architecture and Design Museum has extended their exhibition on Los Angeles Never Built. And it's a fantastic, fantastic exhibit. It gives us the ability to think a little bit outside of the box and look at Los Angeles from a different lens. And Tibby, the executive director there, Tibby Dunbar, gave me business cards to give to all of you. I took the entire staff yesterday for a retreat there so we can take a look at it, and it was a fascinating conversation about land use, planning, and economic development. So the extension of the exhibit runs until October 27th. It's curated by Sam Lubel and Greg Golden and was designed by Clive Wilkinson Architects. And the exhibit is being asked to be showcased in other cities and other countries. So it's a fantastic exhibit. Courage all of you to go to see What If about Los Angeles. Thank you.
Yeah, well, I look forward to getting my card. Okay, any other announcements, members? If everyone in the council could please rise for adjourning motions, I'll look to my right, Mr. Price, Mr. Coretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Friday, October 4th, the city of Los Angeles lost a lovely woman, a great friend, and a truly magnificent philanthropist and human being. Joyce Black, who passed away this past Friday at the age of 75, was an amazing civic treasure and a person of extraordinary warmth and grace. On a couple of occasions, I had the special privilege of honoring Joyce and her husband, Stanley Black, and their family. And indeed, those of you who were on the council last year joined me in declaring January 10th, 2012, to be Joyce and Stanley Black Family Day in the city of Los Angeles. And through their leadership, accomplishments, and gifts, the Blacks have changed Los Angeles for the better while helping countless people. And that's a living legacy. On the very day of her passing, a news story appeared with the headline, "Joyce and Stanley Black Donate $15 Million Gift to Children's Hospital of Los Angeles." She died the way she lived, giving back. And my family was particularly impacted by one of their gifts. When my daughter was at Children's Hospital and spent four months there paralyzed with an autoimmune disease before a miraculous recovery, they had just given a couple-million-dollar gift that included paying for a garden for contemplation and meditation, an outdoor garden that Children's Hospital never had before. And that enabled Rachel to be placed in a wheelchair and get outside every day and keep her spirits up until a miraculous cure was found for her. So that was something I always told them personally I was grateful for. Joyce married Stanley Black 57 years ago. Stanley Black helped shape Los Angeles through his professional endeavors in real estate with KB Management and then Black Equities. Their managerial expertise in many projects has shaped the city, the region, and even the entire country's landscape. And of course, Joyce was part of that whole amazing story too. But the deeds of sheer kindness are what mattered most to them and their accomplishments. And in addition to their many gifts to Children's Hospital and Vista Del Mar, they also were involved with the American Diabetes Association, City of Hope, Stop Cancer, Israel Bonds, the Jewish Federation, whose building bears their name, the Jewish Home, Jewish Big Brothers, the LA Opera, Cedar Sinai Medical Center, and many, many other charities of which they gave incredibly generously. Joyce is survived by her husband Stanley, her son Jack, their daughter Jill Black Zalben, daughter Janice Black Warner, and her husband Douglas Warner, many, many other grandchildren and other relatives. And services will be held today at the Hillside Memorial Park at 3:00 PM. And in lieu of flowers, the family has asked for donations to be made for any of the following charities: Vista Del Mar, Children's Hospital of Los Angeles, LA Ort, Beethushuvah, City of Hope, and the LA Jewish Family for the Aging. And she will be greatly missed by, particularly by the hundreds of thousands of people that she and her family have helped over the years.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts. Now I'm going to look to the side, Mr. Blumenthal. Anyone? Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Leonardo Bologna, who passed away peacefully September 21st at the age of 80. Leo was born in Trappito, Sicily on September 16th, 1933, and he spent his life as a general contractor in the South Bay Area for 58 years. He is survived by his loving wife Jackie, sons Michael, Vince, and Mateo, daughter Christie, and numerous other family members. He will forever be in our hearts. A funeral mass was held Friday, October 4th at Mary Star of the Sea Church. May Leo rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting is now adjourned.